All right, City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Alderman Revelle. Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Fleming.
Here.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Okay, we have quorum.
All right, all right, thank you, Clerk Reed. Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, March 9th, 2020 Evanston City Council Meeting. We had a couple of council members who couldn't make it this evening because they were at National League of Cities or other things, but we do have six of our aldermen here tonight, so we do have quorum. First up is Mayor Public Announcements. The first one I'd like to do, Matt, why don't you come on up and introduce yourself to folks. This is Colon Cancer Month, and Matt is a survivor, and so I just asked if he would make a couple remarks to folks here in the committee, so welcome, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. March is Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month, and as the mayor said, in 2018, I was one of the 150,000 people that is diagnosed annually with colon cancer. It is the second-leading cause of cancer deaths among men and women combined, and 1 in 20 people will be diagnosed with colorectal cancer. The most important thing is, 1 in 3 people are not currently up to date on their screening, and that 60% of colon cancer deaths can be prevented with a simple test. Colonoscopies have been proven to diagnose early and allow for treatment early. My cancer was a stage 3 cancer, which sounds more advanced, but luckily it was self-contained within the colon, so a simple surgery was able to remove it. And at this current time, I have no evidence of disease. I'm still going through follow-ups, so I can't say 100% that I'm cancer-free yet, but I do want to encourage everyone during this time to, if you are 45 or older, talk to your doctor about getting a colonoscopy. If you have a family history and are younger than 45, talk to your doctor right away about it. They actually are recommending that for people with a family history, that you be tested up to 10 years before the diagnosis age of the person in your family. So if someone was 41 when they are diagnosed, you should begin testing at 31. So I appreciate the mayor ceding a little bit of his time so that I could make this announcement, but just to encourage everyone to go out, and if you are due for a colonoscopy, do get it, because they can save your life. Thank you.
Matt, just one question. So I think a lot of people have in their mind that the guideline is 50, at the age of 50, that you have to go through a colonoscopy.
It just changed recently, because they're seeing it happen more prevalently below the age of 50. And so talk to your doctor, and your doctor's, and you will make the best diagnosis for your individual case, and in some cases, they may say, "You're good to wait until 50," but at least open the conversation with your doctor.
Great. Thank you for that new information, and thanks for being a spokesperson, Matt. All right, second thing up, you know, you've heard me before and other members up here talk about the need to focus, you know, more efforts on mental health in this community. I really think it's a crisis. And I've got the State of the City address coming up on Friday this week, and a portion of that speech will be focused on mental health as well. But I'm proud to announce that March 15th to the 21st, 2020, is going to be Creative Arts Therapy Day. We're blessed in Evanston to have the Institute for Therapy in the Arts. Did I get that right, Jenny, or did I just mess that up? Why don't you come on up to the podium for a second, too, Jenny? And Jenny Rooks is the Executive Director of ITA, and to have a leader like ITA here means a lot to Evanston. It means we can attract others to this community for conferences and workshops and discussions about the importance of the arts in helping people get therapy for different issues. So it is my pleasure to, as mayor, to proclaim March 20th as Creative Arts Therapy Day and call upon the people of the city of Evanston to help increase the awareness of arts, dance movement, drama, and music therapy, so more people can receive the help they need in improving their mental health or cognitive functioning and work toward developing a culture of humility towards marginalized groups in our community. So Jenny, is there anything you'd like to add about that? And then I want to present this proclamation to you and your organization.
No, we just, we really appreciate that. We hope that more people know about these therapies, they can get the help that they need. Not everyone heals the same way, and talking about your problems isn't always an option, and people don't have access to language and words in the same way, so we know the arts can be a powerful tool in helping people. So, thank you.
And how many do you serve?
We serve 1,500 last year.
1,500?
Yeah.
Well, it's our pleasure, then, to present you at the creative therapy. All right, so why don't you come on up here, we'll take a picture, and we'll be good examples. We'll be...
Okay.
All right. All right. Here we go.
Ready? Thank you.
We had an organization there we wanted to recognize, but a person in our community that we'd like to recognize, and I know there's a lot of people here this evening to support and show their support, for this person who has done a tremendous amount for this community for decades. Some might say, "I'm mayor in part because of this person and leadership Evanston." So it is my honor to recognize today as the Mary Beth Schroeder Day. Come on, come on up, come on up here, Mary Beth, and I want people, your involvement in Evanston is long... It's always nice to get a standing ovation, isn't it?
It is.
Isn't it? I want folks here, I know many know you, but for those that don't or those that are watching from home, to understand the impact that you've had here in Evanston. So I'm going to read the proclamation that we have today. Whereas Mary Beth Schroeder, Vice President of Programs at Evanston Community Foundation, is being recognized as a community leader for more than 20 years. Whereas Mary Beth came to Evanston after graduating from the University of Illinois with an undergraduate degree in its history and received her Master's of Library Science from the University of Chicago, and then began her career in Chicago. Whereas Mary Beth became the second director of the highly respected Leadership Evanston program in 1999, and continuously improved the program, which has graduated over 800 local civic nonprofit and community leaders, who have gone on to help Evanston thrive as a vibrant, just and equitable community. And whereas Mary Beth partnered with former mayor Jay Lidle and current alderman Eleanor Revelle in 2000 to create the Public Service Challenge Program, which serves to encourage local residents to run as candidates or work as campaign workers for local offices. And whereas Mary Beth worked with generous donors to develop and lead the root-to-fruit, Building the Future, and partners for the Future Grant Programs, helping to build the long-term sustainability and capacity of over 60 Evanston-serving nonprofits. And whereas Mary Beth has been a leader in the foundation's community works effort in the creation and growth of Evanston Cradle to Career, becoming a passionate advocate for early childhood support and education as a result. And whereas Mary Beth has served as a volunteer leader in Evanston, both in public schools while raising her three sons with her husband Charlie Vernon, and as president of the Evanston Public Library Board during the renovation of the children's room and the development of the innovative teen loft there. And whereas Mary Beth has always had a genuine passion and concern for the underserved in our community, and has shown that passion diligently over the years through tireless hours of steadfast service to all of Evanston. Now, therefore, I, we did a little twist here that's a little different, and we can't do this with anyone other than Mary Beth, now, therefore, I, Stephen Howard Hagerty, Mayor of the city of Evanston and the first, but not last, Leadership Evanston graduate to become mayor, do hereby proclaim March 9th, 2020, as Mary Beth Schroeder Day, in celebration of her retirement from the Evanston Community Foundation and her many years of service to our great community. Congratulations.
You can say a couple of words.
Nobody ever wants to give me a mic, I know, so I'll be really quick. I couldn't be more grateful to all of you and to the city of Evanston. My late husband Charlie and I moved here in 1991 because we wanted to find the best place to raise our kids, and they turned out reasonably well. Stand up, guys. And had a great experience, and it was a privilege of my life to just kind of accidentally be at a PTA meeting where somebody said, "Carol Mullins is retiring from Leadership Evanston. You think anybody here wants to hear about that job?" And I thought, "Oh, I do." And I have to point out, Alderman Revelle was the person who led the committee that hired me, so for good or ill, it's all her fault. And I'm super proud that sitting on the dais beside Steve, it's the first and not last Leadership Evanston alum, are Peter Braithwaite, who is a graduate of the very first leadership class I went, and Erica Storley. So we are, and if Robin were here, she is a proud Leadership Evanston grad, too. I'm super proud of what Evanston Community Foundation does for the community, and I will stay in support of it and Evanston for all my lifelong days. Thank you so much.
Ready? One, two, one more. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager Storley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three announcements this evening. First, I'm going to kick off with the introduction of our new city attorney Corporation Counsel, Kelly Ganderski. Kelly started with us last Monday. She comes to us from the city of Chicago, where she was previously the Executive Director of the Chicago Department of Animal Care and Control, and previously, before that, served two years as Supervising Assistant Corporation Counsel for the City of Chicago Department of Law. We're very excited to have her here, and if you'd like to go ahead and please say a few words, thank you.
Mayor, Council, Clerk Reed, Manager Storley, thank you for having me. Members of the council, I just wanted to say thank you so much for welcoming me to Evanston. I look forward to bringing my risk management skills, as well as my ability to problem-solve, to bring what I think will be really effective-based solutions to the city of Evanston, and I'm really proud of my new team. Here with me is Deputy Cummings, and I look forward to serving you all. Thank you very much.
I also wanted to mention that public work staff is requesting the assistance of 20 to 25 volunteers to help clean up small rocks and pebbles from the grassy area of the lakefront parks. Recent storms and high winds generated huge waves on Lake Michigan that resulted in small rocks and pebbles being deposited into the parks. The debris needs to be removed prior to the mowing season. If anybody's available to help out, volunteers are requested to meet at 9:00 on Saturday, March 21st, at Clark Square Park. Volunteers are requested to sign up at volunteerevanston.org. And lastly, Sarah Flax is here to give us an update on the census.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members, Clerk Reed, Manager Storley. The census is kicking off. You could get your first mailing starting this Thursday. Why it matters? Representation. Illinois is likely to lose one representative, maybe two. We don't want it to happen, so we have to be counted, because it's based on population. Resources. Over $675 billion are allocated every year using census data, and it's really hard to say exactly how much of that comes directly to Evanston, because it comes in through so many channels, you know, Medicaid, WIC, all of those programs don't come directly to the city, but they help and support our residents. Road dollars frequently come through the state to the city, and things like the Purple Line renovation doesn't come through us, but definitely affects us. The state estimates that for every one person undercounted, the state loses $1,400 a year, and so this lasts for 10 years. So that means every undercount is $14,000 that we don't get. Not a good thing. This is kind of a confusing map, sorry about that, but we wanted to get across this, there's a whole different analysis this time about who's likely to respond and who's not likely to respond. The federal government did this map of the likelihood of different census tracts responding, and the dark blue ones are the ones that are the least likely to respond. This is, in many cases, are our neighborhoods with our minority residents and our lower-income residents, and Stacey Abrams said that second to voting, the census is the most important thing that people can do to make sure they're represented. But they are predicting perhaps as much as a almost 50% undercount on the self-response to the census in some of our census tracts, which is not a good thing. We have the numbers that everybody self-responded in the last census, so we are supposed to get a live-action map, where, once they kick this off on the 20th, we will every day be able to go in and see who's responded from what census tracts, and track down those who are not responding and the ones that we need to. There are a lot of changes from the 2010 census. You will get a mailing at your house, or your apartment, or wherever you live, and it will ask you to go online and complete the census. Well, that's nice, maybe, but it also means a lot of people who are used to filling out a form are going to go, "What do I do if I don't have broadband?", things like that. We are opening our libraries and our community centers, so people can go there. We are developing what we're calling pop-up census sites. We're working with some of the churches. Our first pop-up site is Friendship Baptist Church, so we're really trying to make it easier for people to respond. People will also be able to respond by phone, and the good thing about it is both the phone and the online will be in 12 different languages in addition to English, so it can actually be a good thing. Easy and short, they say it'll take us about 10 minutes. There aren't that many questions that are really being asked. It's not like the old long form. They're asking, "How many people live in your dwelling unit?", "What type of dwelling unit it is?", and some other details like that. They're really asking a lot of detail about everyone who lives there, but it actually is used. For example, children under the age of five are one of the most often undercounted groups, interestingly enough. Well, that directly is used to determine how much childcare money goes into different communities. So that's just one example of why these details matter. You'll get that first mailing. If you don't respond, you'll get another. If you don't respond, you'll get another. And ultimately, they'll send you a paper ballot, and if you still don't respond, you will have an numerator knocking on your door later on. They'll be persistent. There's some really important things to be aware of, because, again, it is a change. You know, some people say, "Oh, I'll be asked to respond online, so I'll get an email", right? Uh-uh. If you get an email, it's not the census. The census goes to your address, not to individual people. You will not be asked for credit cards, social security numbers, anything like that. You will not be asked if you are a citizen. It won't come from a political party, and an important thing is, nobody's personal information is shared with any other governmental body. So, you know, if you have more people living in your dwelling unit than should be, it's not going to go to property standards. It's not going to go, all of this information legally cannot be shared with anyone until 72 years are passed, and then personal information can be shared, and it is one of the most important ways of people tracing their ancestry. Interesting thing. Anyway, we're encouraging everyone to respond to the census. You'll see more information and ways and places you can respond, but it really is important to the future of Evanston, our ability to take care of the needs of our residents, and continue to have representation in Congress. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Also, I forgot to mention my fourth announcement for this evening. We've been working a lot on the coronavirus response and working in collaboration with our federal, state, and local partners. As many of you know, the city of Evanston has a certified local health department headed up by Ike Ogbo, who is our director of that department. He has been phenomenal in standing up a local task force, as well as working with our medical reserve corps and our CERT responders to be prepared should we have to do anything. At this point, we, you know, things are changing minute by minute, but everything that we hear is that risk remains low in Evanston currently. Of course, that could change at any moment, and we're going to be ready if it does, but right now, everybody should not panic. Wash your hands, and be diligent about practicing safe and healthy hygiene, and not coming to work or school if you're sick. So thank you for that. We will, we have a webpage up on the city website. You can also call 301 for more information, but we will be keeping the community informed as this progresses, and hopefully we will minimize or mitigate any and all harm to the residents of Evanston. So, thank you.
Thank you. I would just add, I've been on a lot of the conference calls with the state. The governor had a conference call late Friday that I was on, the public health director was on, there's one coming out of Washington on Friday with, or excuse me, Wednesday this week with the CDC and folks from the White House. This is a matter that we need to take seriously, okay? As communities, anybody that's out there and thinks, "Oh, this is no worse than the flu," I want you to think about your parents, or grandparents, or people that are older than you. They are the most susceptible to this. This attaches to your lungs, that's why it is a severe respiratory virus, and if you're asking yourself, "Well, what can I do?", so all the things that you're reading about in the paper about, you know, good hygiene, okay? And if somebody in your proximity comes down with this virus, it is about, you know, self-isolation, okay? And keeping yourself away, and that is keeping, you know, the community safe. We will continue to put information out there as we get it. Another thing that you can do, and this was something that I hadn't realized until I sat on this conference call, was that the state Health Department Director was very clear, "If you have not gotten a flu shot, even though it's really late in the season, please get a flu shot." And the reason that she said that isn't because the flu shot is going to protect you from COVID-19. It's not, but it's going to relieve the healthcare system, and the healthcare system is really worried about being overrun, okay? It's not a question, honestly, of whether there will be a case. There will be cases, okay? We're already seeing it. There's seven confirmed cases, but you can look at other states, and it's increasing. And so the authorities are taking this very seriously. I ask everybody in this community to take heart of the measures that they're asking people to take. What we are trying to do is, we are trying to bide time, okay, as a nation, because it's going to take 12 to 18 months for a vaccine, okay? Questions have been raised about, "Well, when it warms up, is this going to go away", all right? The scientists right now don't know, okay? Because some people say, "Well, it happened in Florida, it's pretty warm in Florida", so they don't know. If that did, if it became a little dormant, that would be a break, okay, for all of us. People are asking about, "Okay, well, is, you know, this event going to be canceled, or is school going to be canceled?" I can tell you that our public health director, who is our local point person, okay, on this and can declare, you know, public health emergency and all of that, has a task force, is in communication with our schools, with Northwestern University, with Rotary. Eric Witherspoon and I were on the phone this evening talking about this, and it's very dynamic, but it's being taken very seriously, and we need everybody in the community to do their part. So, thank you. With that, Alderman Rainey, I'm sorry, I saw you're late on when we're on the census.
It's not anywhere near as important as this. I was wondering if Sarah or City Manager could tell me, are we, as a city, able to do pop-up census spaces, kiosks, whatever?
We are, and if there are locations, we can, we actually got a grant from the state of Illinois, and we bought some additional Chromebooks, and so we are going to be doing pop-ups, and if you have locations that you would like them, absolutely, we will work on that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. City Clerk, announcements?
Yes, a few announcements, all relating to elections. It is, we're well into our primary election season. Early voting began last week. This week, early voting will be 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. here at the Civic Center on the weekends, on Saturday and Sunday, on Saturday until 5:00 p.m., on Sunday until 4:00 p.m., from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 on Sunday, 9:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. on Saturday. You can, when you early vote, you just need to, if you have an ID, bring an ID, but if you don't have it, you will still be able to be serviced if you want to register and vote all at the same time. Just bring two forms of ID, and one of those forms of ID will need to have your current or the address that you'd like to register at. Evanston is, as usual, the most utilized early voting center with 2,310 folks early voting here in Evanston. The next highest is Orland Township, and then Willmet Centennial Rinks is following that with a little under 2,000. So this is a very highly utilized early voting site. One of the things that the county and myself are excited about is that the county clerk's office has rolled out new early voting machines that increase the security of our elections and create a paper trail that is separate of how the old machines used to work, which kept the paper trail internal. So we have a short, one-minute clip. Oh, there's no sound. Oh, that's unfortunate. Election, yeah, the clip will be put on the website. Elections are more secure, and early voting is more secure here in suburban Cook County, and that is something to be excited about. So if you haven't early voted, it's a very easy process, and they're new, much larger screens, so we're excited about that. Also, one bit of note, or one bit of information of note, is that Cook County Jail now has an early voting site for the first time in its history, thanks to a number of organizations, and 112 folks, early voting started yesterday there. 112 folks have early voted, including, I believe, two Evanston residents. So we are making sure that the franchise is expanded to as many people as possible here in suburban Cook County. Those are my announcements for today. Oh, I do want to make one quick announcement. There has been a bit of confusion. One polling place in Evanston in the 4th Ward, the county clerk's website and maybe even some mailings have said that it's at the new Robert Crown site. The old Robert Crown site's address was listed, but early voting will be at the new Robert Crown site. There have been a number of other polling place changes, I think most notably in the 8th Ward. 415 Howard has been moved to Oakton Elementary School. So, those are my announcements for today.
Thank you, Clerk Reed. And speaking of the new Robert Crown, there is going to be a dedication of the facility this Saturday, March 14th, from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. So if you're looking for something to do, come on out and check out this fabulous facility that everybody here in Evanston has worked hard for a long time to build. It's something. Our plan is, once the field, the old building's down and they do all the fieldwork, we'll have a grand community celebration later this summer to celebrate everything.
Sorry, one more announcement that I forgot to make, is that folks can come into the clerk's office to volunteer Wednesday through Friday if you'd like to help us make nonpartisan phone calls and text messages to folks to remind them particularly about early voting.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Reed. All right, we're going to turn now to public comment. Public comment, for those of you that are new, is set up where we have 45 minutes per the council rules. We take the total number of people that want to speak at public comment divided by 45, and today we come up with a minute 30. So each of you have 1 minute and 30 seconds if you need all that time. If you get to that time, we've got a system up here, if you haven't, if it's your first time speaking this year, that if it's red, it means you need to stop talking, and we're going to call the next person, okay? So if that is red, we're going to call the next person. As always, I appreciate people being respectful of everybody that wants to get up here and share their perspective. So with that, we're going to start off. We've got Daniel Joseph, then Mike Vasilko, then Carolyn Murray. So, welcome. Let's see, is Daniel not here? He's usually sitting here in the front. I don't see him, so Mike, all right, you're up. Still a minute 30, but you are up, sir.
I would like you to focus more on the detail of this coronavirus thing. You did a lot of speaking about, "Talk to this person, talk to that person, talk to the governor," but you didn't give us any details about what you're doing that's preventative. I asked the council in an email to remove a $13,231.94 expenditure from the bills list. It's a... It's a, it's a payment to an attorney that is representing Mayor Haggerty and, and Rainey for their, their work to strip Evanston voters of the right to vote on the EVI referendum on this Monday, this March ballot. So, I'd asked the council again to remove that. Somebody needs to make a motion, and somebody needs to second that. That's not something that Evanston voters should pay for. It's something that Mayor Haggerty and Ann Rainey should pay for. Speaking of, you know, there is something going on with our press, if you want to call it that. A blogger named Bill Smith, who seems to be the epitome of ignorance in our community, he has the gall to, again, post an address, somebody's home address, in this case, Devon Reed's, also post a personal financial matter and other information. I'm going to keep speaking on this.
But we need to get to Carolyn Murray, Mike. It's a minute 30. Come on, Mike, we got to stick with, with, for everybody.
Maybe you then could denounce Bill Smith, and you could remove any funding from Evanston now, and maybe you could ask Ann Rainey if she, in fact, was the one.
Point of order.
All right.
To some point, stop these personal attacks at the microphone. It is really getting to be invasive and harassment of not only me, but other members of this council. You need to take control and make it stop. It is humiliating.
So, did you contact his landlord?
So, we're not going to get into that. This isn't, Mike, you know this. This isn't a dialogue. Carolyn, would you come on up? Carolyn, you're up next. Carolyn Murray, you here? All right, how about, next, we've got Mark Simon or Tina Payden? Let's see, so, Mark Simon not here, Tina Payden. How about Kelsey Davis? Kelsey, you here? Okay, we're cruising through here tonight. How about Kelsey's husband? I miss James Davis. I may have the first name wrong. Okay. How about Mary Rosinski? Liz Kramer, Willie Shaw? This is, am I, am I, am I reading the wrong list tonight? This is, yeah, I could be. Let's see. I could have, because, let's see. Yeah, totally. That's not the list that I have. Why am I not seeing them on the bottom? I'm sorry, I have my glasses on. Yeah. No, that's, I'm going to pull it up one more time. This is the one you just sent me. Dan James, Jean, okay. All right, well, here we go. Interestingly, Dan was the first one, and, and then it went to James. So, my apologies, we actually apparently have 35 people signed up, not, not 30. So, we're going to set it at a, a minute 15 for each speaker, okay? So, it's a minute 15. Dan Joseph, again, I wasn't here. How about James Engelmann? James, you're next.
I'm James Engelmann from the 5th Ward, and I would like to talk about, if you guys could, about FIBA Golden, that organized the guy to restructure Jim's floor so people could use it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, James. Jean Smiling Coyote, Mercedes Santos, and Mike Bowle.
I'm Jean Smiling Coyote. Please say no to the appeal regarding the certificate of appropriateness for 2390 Orington and affirm the Historic Preservation Commission denial. As I told the Preservation Commission on January 14th, the open soil these trees need to thrive could have been roped off in the original plan, after which the entire site would have been subdivided into buildable house lots. If this open space was legally required to have been distributed among adjacent house lots, that could have been done while keeping it marked unbuildable. Had I been involved, this would have been done. I told the Preservation Commission I'm still available to try to create a house plan which would preserve the needed open space. I still haven't been invited. Would the city of Evanston encourage the developer to ask for my suggestions to enable all parties, including the Oaks, to win?
Thank, thank you, Jean. Give, yeah, that's Clerk Reed, right here. All right, thank, thank you. Mercedes, and then Mike Bowle, then Mia Alley Ford.
Good evening. I'm part of the Smith, the Concerned Citizens of Smith Park Neighborhood Group. We and our allies here tonight are here to give statements regarding the Tape Coat Factory pollution. For those of you not familiar with the Smith Park Neighborhood, we are this wonderful little community which crosses over the 2nd Ward and the 5th Ward. We are a very diverse group of residents comprising of older families who have lived in the neighborhood for many decades, and new families who have moved in the area within the past year. We are concerned, we are angry, and we are here to ask for your support. As our elected officials, we want to partner with you to come up with an expeditious solution in protecting the residents from Tape Coat pollution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mercedes. Mike, then Mia Alley Ford, then Teresa Volpe.
Hi, my name is Mike Bowle. I live immediately east of Tape Coat. They're a company that makes a, a product where they basically are taking coal tar, if you know what that is. It's like the residue from distilling petroleum, and they're making a tape out of it. The issue that we have is that they don't really have any pollution controls, so the fumes from this process, they're heating up this coal tar, the fumes are basically just being pumped out the top of the factory and spread out into the neighborhood. They're a block away from Smith Park, so there's children all over the neighborhood. I've got three young children myself. Coal tar contains carcinogenic compounds, known carcinogens. It also contains compounds that are probable carcinogens, and this has been going on for two years. So, it was over a year ago that the state EPA told them they're not in compliance with their permit, so they're violating their permit by being an odor nuisance, but we also believe a health issue for the community, and we're just asking that the city try to do more to enforce the, the current ordinances, try to find them for, you know, creating this odor nuisance and not doing anything about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mia Alley Ford, then Teresa Volpe, then Jerry Lacy.
Hi, my name's Mia Ford, and I'm neighbors with Mike. I live right across from Tape Coat Factory, and I'm here to talk about the severe health issues that the fumes and the toxic chemicals are causing, not only with my family, but all of the children and everyone else that live there. Specifically, we've experienced issues like rare cysts, tumor growths, masses in our naval, in our nasal septums. It's very specific, and it's very rare, and it's severe, and it's dangerous. So, my family ended up having to move out of that neighborhood. We now live in South Evanston, and all of those issues are now gone. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Mia. Teresa Volpe, Jerry Lacy, then Leslie Shad.
Hi, I moved to the Smith Park Neighborhood with my three children and Mercedes Santos two and a half years ago because we wanted a better place for our children to grow up in. In Smith Park, we saw a diverse group of neighbors who cared about one another. We saw young families with children playing in the park. We saw golden-aged adults walking their dogs. We went a neighborhood where our kids could play outside with their friends and cross the street without worrying about getting hit by a car. Today, I regret moving here. I regret it because of Tape Coat. I worry that I may have put my children's lives in danger. I fear not only for my health, but the health of others. Since moving here, I wake up every morning with a horrible headache, and about a year and a half ago, my headaches became so intense, I suffered an aneurysm, and I was put into stroke, stroke watch. I was 48 years old and in good shape. I shouldn't have been on a stroke watch. As a community, as we've organized, we have connected quite a few dots related to the health issues in our community, such as the headaches. I sat in my dining room and listened to Mira talk about her health issues. What teenager has so many breast tumors removed? What 15-year-old dies from lung cancer? Why are there so many cancer-related illnesses in our neighborhood? It simply does not make sense. The only common denominator is Tape Coat and the pollutions it emits. The park I mentioned is kitty-cornered from Tape Coat, less than a block away. How can kids play in a park when you can hardly breathe from the smell?
Thank you, Teresa. Thank you. Jerry Lacy, Leslie Shad, and then Aldrick Martinez Olsen.
Hi, my name is Jerry Lacy. I'm concerned about the safety of the, of the neighborhood. I'm concerned about the, the amount of traffic that enters into the Tape Coat property, in and out of the Tape Coat property. I'm concerned about the speed by which they travel through the neighborhood. We have a neighborhood that consists of a lot of young kids now, and they play in the park that is directly across the street from the facility, and they, as kids do, they occasionally dart in and out or across the street. And I've personally witnessed a couple situations that were kind of close. And now, while it didn't result in any fatalities or anything like that, I think that, that really doesn't predict a future circumstance from happening. I'm also lastly concerned about the amount of damage that's being caused by the trucks trying to make a turn into the property from Ashland. These trucks are large, and so, as a result, oftentimes, they end up traveling, they end up going through our yards. And so, I personally have had to, I live on the corner, so I've personally had to, to replace or repair the, the grass in my yard probably about four times. And this is a conversation that I've had with, with Tape Coat, and nothing's happened.
Thank you, thank you, Jerry. Leslie Shad, Aldrick, and then Jeff Parker.
I'm Leslie Shad from Natural Habitat Evanston, and I just wanted to make a couple of comments about trees. First, I hope that you'll deny the appeal for the trees and protect the trees at 2390 Orington. In 2011, the city asked that they protect the trees. In 2019, repeated meetings were held in the Historic Preservation Commission, asking them to shrink the footprint so that the trees could be protected, and he really made no measurable changes other than to offset an enclosed porch. So, you can't say that it's impossible to protect trees when you haven't really tried. So, and it was disapproved by the council, by the commission 7-2, so I hope you'll affirm that decision. The other thing is, I just realized that the tree preservation ordinance is up, and I hope you might consider passing the staff-approved version of the ordinance and then maybe amending it later to preserve the trees. I'm, I'm, I do want us to preserve the trees ultimately, but if we can't, if we can at least get some ordinance on the books, I think that's a step forward. So, that's the end of me.
Thank you, Leslie. Aldrick, Martinez Olsen, Jeff Parker, and then Jean Prinville.
Evanston is guilty of environmental racism. Because of a history of systemic injustice and redlining, factories take advantage of communities of color and low-income communities, knowing that there is a system working against them to oppress their voices. Evanston is ignoring the fact that 18-year-olds are getting breast tumors, a 15-year-old died of lung cancer, and people are living with constant headaches, and this is contributing to systemic oppression. It is imperative that Evanston, a community that prides itself in equity, takes immediate action to protect their most vulnerable people. Environmental racism is alive and well in Evanston. We see it with the waste transfer station, and we see it with Tape Coat. Tape Coat has been told to correct their equipment, but they refuse. Do we value a company's decision more than the health of our people? The public has been complaining about this issue for years, but many of us are just finding out about it now, and we are enraged. We are not going to stay silent, and we demand that you take action. The very least Evanston can guarantee to its citizens is breathable air.
Thank you, thank you, Aldrick. Jeff, then Jean Prinville, then James Latta.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Parker. I have lived in Smith Park for the last, coming on four years, but I know Evanston very well. I went to school here. And because of that, I know what happens when there are vibrant communities and when there are a rebirth within a neighborhood, and that's what we're seeing within Smith Park. We want to be great partners with all of our neighbors, but that includes the businesses that are within our neighborhood, and that's not what's happening with Tape Coat. If there's one thing I want you to take away from all of the speakers that have been coming up and discussing what's going on in our neighborhood, is that we are organizing, we are collecting data, and for as long as Tape Coat is a problem in our neighborhood, we are going to be a problem for you. It's not going to be a one-meeting situation, it's not going to be sending a couple letters. This problem needs to be resolved, and while we understand the limits that city council has, we want you and all of the city employees to use the full force of this government to protect the children, to protect the elderly members in our community, and for once and for all, make sure that this problem goes away. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Jean, then James Latta, then Nancy Serene.
Good evening. My name is Jean Prinville. I'm the president of the Southeast Evanston Association, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the SCA members to advocate for transparency and trust in the decision-making process for the Harley Clark property. The city council voted on March 11th, 2019 for requests for reuse of Harley Clark. At the same meeting, there was also a vote on establishing a review evaluation committee composed of city staff and citizens to evaluate the results of proposal. After nine-month period, we have four proposals that were submitted, but it appears that the council has, is poised to abandon the original plan and proceed with more of a closed-door process that, that excludes citizen participation. We understand that the change may be expedient, but we are, we really feel that in this situation that's so longstanding and contentious, that expediency may not be the wise way to go. We have seen that there is a good-faith effort, it appears, for transparency that was suggested by Alderman Revell. We support Alderman Revell's suggestion, and we also support citizen participation in the evaluation procedure.
Thank you, Jean. We've got James Latta, Nancy Serene, then Helena Kreetmeyer. Apologize if I'm mispronouncing people's names.
Good evening. My name is James Latta. I live on Lincoln Street and not far from here, and I want to address the issue of ordinance 32020. It seems to me, upon reading this, that this is largely a solution in search of a problem. And I go initially to the memorandum that was handed out, I believe, to all of the members, and on the very first page, it is at least an error, if not misleading, because it says, "Most importantly, the ordinance requires adopted animals to be spayed and neutered, and that animals are only sold from breeders meeting objective requirements implemented by Cook County." Within the wording of the document itself, there is no mention of Cook County. There is only mention of the USDA. From a practical standpoint, I don't think the findings of fact would be sufficient in a court of law. I don't think you can just declare without facts that there is a problem of feral dogs and cats in Evanston. Perhaps cats. I know rabbits, because I got a lot of them in my yard, but I've never seen a lot of feral dogs, and I'm not going to try to pick up a coyote and tell him he's, he's a feral animal. More importantly, perhaps, there is no definition of who is a breeder. We just talk about breeder. There is absolutely no definition of a vital term in here. And finally, it requires people in Illinois, or breeders in Illinois, whatever they may be, to obtain a USDA license. I urge you all to find out what the requirements for a USDA license, who is supposed to do it, because I submit to you that you are going to force people who have no reason to do so to get a USDA license, and I would also suggest that that is highly suspect legally. Thank you very much.
Thank you, James. Nancy, Helena Kreetmeyer, and then Mark Philippack.
Hi, I'm here to encourage transparency and deliberation over all the proposals for an adaptive use for the Harley Clark mansion that the city received on February 28th. I'm also here to applaud putting those proposals on the city's website, thanks to whoever decided to put them up. That's a good start to transparency. Not a single one of those proposals was created in less than a month, so neither should the city's acceptance of one of those be done in any less time, which is what adhering to the RFP's tentative schedule called for. I want deliberation, due diligence, and frankly, appreciation shown towards all of the responders. March 3rd is way too little time for adequate consideration. Furthermore, I'd like to remind the council that the, the committee voted on March 11th, 2019, to have, to vote for a committee, and they voted five to four to establish that citizens' review committee. Last Monday, when the Rules Committee rejected forming that committee, Alderwoman Revell suggested a public presentation. suggested a public presentation of all the proposals, which is an even better idea. Both the referendum results and the experience of the Evanston Community Lake House and Gardens show that residents have an abiding interest in what happens to and at Harley-Clark. So, in conclusion, due diligence has to be our goal out of respect for both residents and proposers. It's the least city can do to show appreciation for all the hard work the proposers did, and it'll show good faith going forward in what will have to be a collaboration between the city and whoever gets the least. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Helena, and Mark Philippack, and Laurie Ann Claus.
Mayor, honorable council members, I have strong family connections in the Seventh Ward, and I would like you to consider voting no on HS1. It would actually place undue burden on the residents of Evanston, because it will limit where they can find well-bred dogs. We're talking about small hobby preservation breeders who have been instrumental in nurturing responsible dog ownership and available anytime to always take the animals back. USDA does not license these breeders as they fall under the forebreeding female exemption. The ordinance does not make a distinction for that. Under this ordinance, only the breeders with five breeding females who have Class A license would be able to sell dogs and cats in the city of Evanston. This will push people to find dogs that they've been researching to be their family companions to Internet, to puppy mills, to somewhere where they don't have the support structure of the small preservationist breeder who will help them maintain that dog for the lifetime of the dog. I think the more, as Ira Sutter, a rescue person myself, we should be all focusing on educating community in how to keep the dogs in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Helena. Mark, then Laurie Ann Claus, then Tony Gritis.
Good evening. My name is Mike Philippack, and I reside at 1575 Ridge Avenue, and I'm here today to talk about the proposed development at 1555 Ridge Avenue. I have some concerns. Mainly, this is not planned well. This is poorly planned. Recently, the applicant has set allowances. One of them is on the north side of our property. It's required to be 15 feet between properties. He's asking for an allowance of three feet. On the east side of the building, which is that alley between Grovan Davis, the requirement is 10 by 35 with a three-foot setback. He's asking for 10 by 25 with a 1.5-foot setback. Lastly, this space is not practical for a 68-unit, five-story building with only 57 places allocated for parking, which essentially means every night, 11 people are going to be driving around, so like summer through winter, searching for a parking space. We're Evanston. We're not Lincoln Park. In conclusion, I understand, and I'm for generating revenue for the city. However, let's do this right. Let's make it practical and build it right. If you're going to set a table for three, don't invite 10 or 20 to dinner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks for that metaphor. Laurie Ann, and then Tony Gritis, and then Jackie Cotts? I can't read my writing. Jackie or Judy Cotts?
My name is Laurie Ann Claus, and I'm a member of Red Door Animal Shelter's rabbit rescue team. Since Easter of 2019, I have helped rescue more than 319 pet rabbits, this is not wild rabbits, that have been abandoned outside where they would have died, and some did. Since Easter of 2019, Red Door Animal Shelter has received 492 owner surrender requests from people wanting to give up their pet rabbit. That totals 811 unwanted pet rabbits in our area in just the last 11 months alone, and Evanston is one of our big problem areas. The financial cost for Red Door is enormous. The cost to field rescuers like myself is not getting to have any sort of life outside of this. When a pet rabbit is abandoned outside, they're in extreme danger. Between predators, parasites, starvation, the fate they meet is pretty grisly if they're not rescued immediately. Most police departments and animal controls do not respond to rabbit calls, and the ones that do do not know how to catch them, so it's up to myself and my group to save them. We have to respond immediately to alerts, and alerts come in every single day. In 2014, Cook County passed an ordinance banning the sale of commercially bred dogs, cats, and rabbits. Unfortunately, with the older ordinance, there were some loopholes, and rabbits have not been protected the way that they were intended to be. I support the ordinance on the agenda. I think it would make an impact on this nightmare.
Thank you, Laurie. Tony Gritis, then Jackie Cotts, then Michael Waszulowski.
Hello. My name is Tony Gritis, and I'm the vice president at Red Door Animal Shelter, which is located in Rogers Park. For the past 20 years, our organization has been responsible for pet rabbits abandoned in your city, because essentially, your animal control is not equipped to handle them. This is a financial burden for our shelter, but I'd like to just give you some brief statistics why we support this ordinance to spay and neuter animals. Rabbits are the third-most popular pet in the United States, but they are more likely to be abandoned than dogs and cats, and that's usually due to hormonal behaviors that are undesirable. They are four times more prolific than cats and 10 times more prolific than dogs. They can have two litters of rabbits every 28 days with as many as 14 kits in the litter. So it gets out of hand very quickly. Oftentimes, retailers and breeders who sell rabbits are giving them or selling them out without, you know, proper sexing. Sometimes the rabbits are too young to be sexed, and that leads to problems for the consumer and for rescue groups that I work with. Our shelter in particular took in 101 of those rabbits that Laurie Ann spoke about. Seven of those were from Evanston. Our team came to your town to rescue them, so we would like your support in this ordinance, because spaying and neutering is the right thing to do.
Thank you, Tony. No wonder we have so many rabbits running around out there. Jackie, and then Michael Waszulowski, and then Ada Young.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Cotts, and I support this humane ordinance 32020. I have lived in Evanston for six years, and I've been on the board of directors at Red Door Shelter for 10 years. I do a lot of educational outreach for Red Door, and I'm appalled by the fact that most pet rabbits are purchased impulsively because they are cute and cheap. The consumer is not properly educated, and the rabbit is likely to be abandoned within a few months because it has doubled in size, is the wrong sex, or exhibits destructive hormonal behaviors, or the family just gets tired of it. Retail pet shops make their profit from the sale of food, cages, and supplies, not the rabbit. Our rescue is more than willing to work with retail stores to provide education, adoption events, and referrals for pet supply sales. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jackie. Michael, and then Ada Young, and then Ray Friedman.
Good evening. My name is Michael Waszulowski. I'm here to speak about the appeal to the City Council Preservation Commission decision denying the certificate of appropriateness for 2390 Orington Avenue to construct a single-family home. As most of you know, this lot is part of the Kendall Place Development, which is in the Northeast Historic District. And as a consequence, the issue of the historic trees has already been addressed quite eloquently. What I want to point out is that the other issue that was important was the design and the mass of the house, which are completely inconsistent with the other homes on both Lincoln Avenue and Orington Avenue in that neighborhood. The same builder was, actually adhered to the guidelines of the Preservation Commission when building the subdivision, making each home distinctive and fitting it well into the neighborhood. However, they seem to have decided now that they're going to deviate from this significantly and simply put a very large, unwieldy house at the corner. And so as a consequence, after many meetings with the commission, they've steadfastly refused to modify their design. So I'm here to encourage you to deny this appeal once and for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Ada Young, and then I understand Ray Friedman's going to pass, Sarah Chatfield, and then Miranda Rivera-Corr.
Hi, I'm Ada Young, and I live at 708 Lincoln Street, which is next to 2390 Orington. I would like to recommend the City Council to vote no to the appeal regarding the certificate of appropriateness for 2390 Orington and affirm the Historic Preservation Committee's denial. The developer-owned tree consultant, Nels Johnson, said the trees are healthy right now, and the proposed construction and digging do have major impacts of the health and structural stability of the trees. I have attended several of the meetings where the Preservation Committee have repeatedly, over several months, asked the developer to reconfigure, reduce the size of the house footprint. The footprint is just too big for the size of the lot, not only for preservation of the historical trees, but the surrounding houses in the area. So therefore, I again would like to recommend the City Council to vote no on the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ada. Sarah Chatfield, then Miranda Rivera-Corr, and then Tamara Friedman.
My name is Sarah Chatfield. I am a longtime Evanston resident and a volunteer with Red Door Shelter, and I would love to see Evanston adopt a humane ordinance requiring all dogs, cats, and rabbits in pet stores be spayed or neutered prior to adoption. A few years ago, I started doing field rescue with Red Door and a network of local volunteers, and we respond to alerts about pet rabbits people have dumped outside and go out and try to catch them. When I was first getting involved, I was shocked by the number of bunnies in our area that end up abandoned outdoors, and always with a big uptick after Easter. This speaks volumes to the number of impulse purchases happening. It's really rewarding when we're able to rescue the rabbits, but it can also be terribly heartbreaking. Sometimes we don't find them, sometimes we find them dead or in terrible condition. After trying to survive outdoors, the bunnies need immediate care, and many of the females are pregnant, which puts a lot of stress on Red Door and other local rescues and fosters trying to help them. I think Evanston should pass an ordinance so that we can do our part to prevent local pets from needless suffering and support our local rescues. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Miranda, and then Tamara Friedman, then Priscilla Giles.
Hi. Hi.
You can move that down if you want.
Thanks. Hey, guys. I'm young, I'm new to this. I have no idea what I'm doing. I was wondering if I'm allowed to ask you guys a question?
So we can't have dialogue? It's just an opportunity for us to listen?
Okay. Great. Well...
But you can email us, you can talk to people at breaks, any of that kind of stuff, if you want. Okay? Yeah.
I was wondering what you guys individually, what your salaries are.
Oh. I think we can answer, I think we can answer that one for you quick.
Cool beans, cool beans.
All right. I think as a mayor, I make $25,318, I think. Twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eighteen. It's about that. And I think you guys make like seventeen thousand. I thought it went up.
Sixteen.
And it's on the website. It's all on the website.
Sixteen.
Yeah. You Google compensation, Evanston mayor, Evanston alderman, it'll come up on the website, the exact amount.
Make more, more, more.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we won't go with their hourly rate, so they'll all claim that they're not even making minimum wage, all of us up here. All right. Thank you, Tamara.
Thank you.
And Miranda. We got Tamara Friedman, you're up, and then Priscilla Giles, then Susan Cooney.
Hi, I'm Tamara Friedman. I'm a lifelong resident of Evanston and a volunteer at Red Door for 15 years. When I started volunteering at Red Door, I didn't know anything about pet rabbits. All I knew were the rabbits outside that everyone keeps talking about, you know, that are nuisance and that kind of thing. But now I know that pet rabbits are a different species from the rabbits outside. They don't recognize each other as the same species when they see each other outside. Pet rabbits have different coats, different temperaments, they're different breeds, they're mixed breeds, there are all kinds of different rabbits, and they're in the pet stores, and they look really cute, but often, always, they're not spayed, neutered before they're sold. And that is a huge problem, as you've heard other people talk about from Red Door Shelter, is that these rabbits just multiply so quickly, and when we rescue them, they end up, you know, not fixed. I wanted to point out that Red Door does a really great job of educating families. So we've adopted out to probably 10, 15 Evanston families, and they have a 13-page packet that they send home with people. Well, they actually make sure people understand all the care that's involved, which is a lot. So I support HS1. Thank you.
Thank you, Tamara. Ms. Giles, Susan Cooney, then Robert Gibbs, or Albert Gibbs.
Priscilla Giles, Fifth Ward. I live in the 1800 block of Ashland, where ComEd, Tape Coat, the bus company, and Post Office Vehicles Park were a block away from the transfer station. I may be the only person willing to speak this way, but at the only meeting where I was present with Tape Coat neighbors and alderperson Robin Ru Simmons, who used to live next door to me and admitted that for the time she lived there, she smelled nothing from Tape Coat. Occasionally, we all smelled from Clark Candy Company. The complaints of feeling sick from Tape Coat seemed very odd to me. At that meeting, the complaints that kept popping up about early morning trucks idling on the street, and even buses and cars running over the curb and grass, was probably legitimate. But the question that came up during the meeting many times was, "When are the townhouses coming?" Believe me, cancer scares me if that is the real fear. Do I smell a rat, or is this aggressive gentrification?
Thank you, Mrs. Giles. Susan Cooney, then Albert Gibbs, and then Tim McGuire.
Well, I don't have a rabbit, but I do have two Wymeriners. And as I read the ordinance, as an owner of two Wymeriners from two different breedings, and I'm part of the AKC Kennel Club, and I bred my dogs, and I sold those dogs, and they do have a lot of dogs. There were 10 puppies in the litter, nine males and one female. And all 10 of those went to great homes. They were out, they're all the way out in Ohio. They were, I was sought out by the AKC website to sell my dogs to them, and you would have prohibited me unless I got some extensive license to breed my dogs, they're my own dogs, and to sell a litter of 10. In all the years I've lived in Evanston since 1972, I've had two litters from two different dogs, have had over nine different Wymeriners. I've field-trial them, I've shown them, and what we try to do as breeders is make sure we send them to homes that can handle a dog the size of a Wymeriner and know what they're doing. And there's a lot of work that's done by people who are trying to improve a breed. So whether it's an Irish Sutter, a Wymeriner, a cute little poodle, these are all dogs that a lot of people love. And when Evanston decides to come in and decide these people can't breed their own dogs, that's, I think, not true. And rabbits, by the way, we don't sell them, so they're sold in pet shops.
Thank you, Susan. Albert Gibbs? Okay, and then after Albert Gibbs will be Tim McGuire, then Matt Grasik.
Hello, Council.
Yes, sir.
Tim McGuire. Thank you.
Oh, Tim, I'm sorry, I had Albert next, and then, but I like that enthusiasm, Tim. I like that. I like that. You're up, Mr. Gibbs.
I see I've changed. Wow, that was interesting. Two things I want to speak about, it was brought to me and my family's attention, that the city of Evanston is attempting to sell the Gibbs Morrison Culture Center there on Church and Dodge. I don't know if that's true or not. But as I looked at things, I came to recognize that you have a couple of salaries on there, if I remember correctly, and these two salaries, could it be the directors and the managers, the amount's over $100,000. I recall a few years ago where the city was saying, "It's not making money, it's not self-sustaining." The recording studio wasn't doing this, that, and the other. When you have salaries that make over $100,000 in just two people, then they should be able to bring enough income in, action to the place where the place should be able to sustain itself. If not, nine times out of 10, you've set this place up to fail, because their salaries is going to eat up anything that the place makes, so the place is not going to be self-sufficient. Try getting rid of those two salaries that are over $100,000. Try putting people in the positions that know how to generate interest, that know how to rotate within the community. The other one is, last night, I was introduced to something I had... The other one is, last night I was introduced to something I had no idea about this man's salary, this man's, Mr. Reed, his salary and his rent were discussed by somebody named Bill Smith. Just give me a second. Why is his rent so important? Why is his rent important? Pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was God talking to me.
I gotta have your rant up there.
But I'm saying, I'm saying such a waste of valuable time, responsibility, it's a waste. Whatever this man's rent is, if you're not going to pay it, why must you publish it?
Okay.
That sounds like there's something else just behind that.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs.
It's pathetic. We need to start, is this how our government is to be run? This is pathetic.
Just so we're clear, that's a newspaper, it wasn't the government that did anything.
But it's pathetic. It doesn't need to run the newspaper for the city of Evanston or something? No? Doesn't need to run it for the city of Evanston?
Tim McGuire, Tim McGuire, you're up. You can think about your entrepreneurial pursuits.
Mayor, mayor, how much do you pay for rent? Is it necessary for me to know? It couldn't change the price of tea in China. Petty.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. All right, Mr. McGuire.
Thank you. Council members, thank you for listening. I'll be brief. I'm Tim McGuire, I live at 2352 Ashland Avenue. I'm just south of the entrance of St. Athanasius School and Parish, and I'm here to request that you reconsider SNA's special use application for 2503 Eastwood. We feel that this deserves a lot more time and a lot more investigation. We need to talk to more of our neighbors and have officials of the school and the community involved in the decision. We just feel as it needs a little more vetting. It's a process where we feel as though the school is reaching out to the community and offering an improvement on the property that will have a positive impact on the entire neighborhood. I've lived in the neighborhood for 18 years now, 10 years at my current address, which is a half a block from the school, and another eight years when I was living just half a block from the parking lot. And there's a property that is in dire need of improvement, and it's there to really be accessed and used by the students of the school and the community, and also to improve the traffic in and out of the parking lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Matt Grasik, Paul Harvey, and then Doreen Price is last.
Hi, good evening. I'm here to ask the council to reconsider the special use application for the property at 2503 Eastwood, the St. Athanasius Parking Lot. I have three children that go to the school. I've lived in the neighborhood for many years, I've moved to the first ward. One of the things that was always a concern for me was my children during recess and playing, interacting with the cars. So I've always been deeply concerned about their safety. I actually have a son with a scar that is directly attributed to running into a parked car that was in the lot in the same play area as him, so probably 100% his fault, but anytime you can take children and cars and separate them, I think we're all better off. They now walk to school, you know, so I'm less concerned about my personal activities and my wife's personal activities getting in and out of the school. But I look at the younger kids, and I remember the concerns that I had when my children are younger, and I'd like to see something done to improve that. And looking through, you know, the proposal and the things that have been done to improve, you know, some of the landscaping and things like that, I think are great, great aspects for the community and will be helpful for everybody long-term. So thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Paul Harvey, and then Doreen Price.
Paul Harvey, thank you. Thank you to the city council for your time and energy with this topic. I'm supporting as well the reconsideration of this application, special use application, adjusting some of the parking and some of the play areas in the St. Athanasius space as well. I'd like to also just thank Ms. Revelle for keeping this moving with our neighbors, the conversations continue, the meetings continue. We had another meeting in the last week, I think that's number four, and trying to come up with some agreements and keep ourselves considering that there is a solution. So we have worked with the city and neighbors and our staff, and we continue to find more points of agreement. Last week, there was another issue that seemed to be reasonably large that we did get some agreement on. So we hope to continue these discussions and prevent a better solution to the city council. We are focusing on our students' safety and our neighbors' safety. This is not a one-way street. We are looking for a win-win situation. Unfortunately, the other side is truly a lose-lose situation. We have a vacant lot that'll unfortunately stay vacant unless we move forward. So thank you for your consideration on this. Look forward to your help.
Thank you, Paul. All right, and Doreen, you're going to wrap it up for us tonight. Did I miss any, did I miss anybody? Okay. Oh, Kirk.
Hi.
I'm sorry, you're going to wrap it up after Doreen, all right. All right, Doreen, you got, you got it, Doreen.
No, he's before me.
He can be before you, okay. All right, Kirk, you're up, and then Doreen, and then we'll move on.
City council, thank you. My name is Kirk Moffett. I'm a SNA's parishioner, a parent, and a facility committee member of St. Athanasius School. I'm here to ask for your reconsideration for our special use app that will help reduce traffic congestion and improve safety in the South Alley. By doing so, this will help us develop a plan that will improve safety for over 200 students, 40 staff members, and over 700 Evanston families, parishioners and neighborhood families not just related to the church or school. It will improve alley traffic flow for all the neighbors. It will increase the number of handicap parking stalls, which is very important for the church. And then lastly, it will enable the school to plan for future campus improvements and developments that will benefit the neighbors, the neighborhood, the school community, and all of Evanston. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Kirk. All right, Doreen, now you're up.
Hi. Just a quick, people, if people want to keep up with the science, given all the information that's kind of back and forth and whether or not the state versus the CDC versus the whatever, the science behind it is published in Nature. And Nature, right now, has open access to any article concerning the virus. So if you have any questions, go to Nature. I do Nature's briefings, so that's a plug for some for-profit organization, basically doing some good to help people be up to speed. In terms of the pet ordinance, I think there's a little bit of a haste here, and I agree with Susan Cooney with her Wymerangers. She represents, when I heard her speak, my jaw dropped because she reminds me of my breeder, Rebby, that you've not know, and a very conscientious breeder who has people lined up because the structure, function, form, all the good things about dogs, that the only reason that, it's not beauty contest, we're talking about animals that represent the best in their own nature, just like people. When you have breeders like that, you don't want to obstruct their ability to help others. My breeder has a big waitlist, and so does any other responsible breeder, so they self-regulate in terms of only selecting the best homes. They also take back a dog that doesn't make it with a family, in a rare instance where it doesn't. So they're very responsible. Lumping them in together with this, I agree with her, is not right.
Thank you, Doreen.
And then one last quick thing about trees. Please, please, with regard to, please, this is dear to my heart. With tree preservation, we need to, I agree with Leslie Shad, that we have to, we have to, have to, have to pass something, but we have to also recognize we're going to be amending this. You are short on oversight from, in terms of objective oversight. I'm the victim of something that lacked that. I am pleading with you to allow for some changes that will allow from external oversight and not put the city up to potential legal lawsuits because they make a decision that another official with, like the Chicago Potent Gardens or whatever, might have a different opinion because they have different experiences. We have to allow for outside counsel or outside information.
Thank you, Doreen, okay. And thank you, thank you everybody for coming out for public comment, as always, and sharing your perspective on a variety of issues. We're now going to turn to the agenda. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. I just wanted to share our last regularly scheduled meeting, city council, that was back in February 24th. I voted on the prevailing side of ordinance 166-0-19, granting a special use permit for St. Athanasius Parish to expand off-street parking at 2503 Eastwood in R1 Single Family Residential District. I've had an opportunity to meet with the aldermen of the ward between the meeting and tonight. I am making a motion to reconsider the ordinance, 166-0-19. It's my understanding the conversations with the parish and with the neighbors are still underway, and I'm making this motion so that we can give those involved an additional two weeks to see if concerns about expanding the parking lot can be addressed.
Is there a second to that motion to reconsider?
Second. Can anyone second? That's not the prevailing side.
Yeah, my understa, yeah, okay. All right, so there's been a motion to reconsider. With that ordinance, I want to make sure I get this number right, Alderman Braithwaite said 166-0-19, is that the correct number? That struck me strange, I always thought it would have been 20 at the end.
Process might have started on that one last year, it's a long process.
Oh, is that?
But I'll confirm that...
Okay, does that sound, just to folks that are out there, is the number 166-0-19? Okay. Yeah, okay. All right, so that's the, the motion is to reconsider it, it was moved by Alderman Braithwaite, seconded by Alderman Wilson, seeing no discussion. Alderman Fisk, now we get some discussion.
I'm sorry, could someone just read the description from the last council meeting?
I don't have it from me.
If you have, if you have it, bring it on up here, I can read it for folks. Thank you, Paul. Okay, great. Okay, so this was on the last agenda, it was P5, ordinance 166-0-19, granting a special use for an educational institution, private and a religious institution, St. Athanasius School and Parish to expand off-street parking in the R1 Single Family Residential District. It reads, "The zoning board of appeals recommends denial, and staff recommends city council adoption of ordinance 166-0-19, granting special use approval for an educational institution, private and religious institutions, St. Athanasius School and Parish to expand off-street parking at 2503 Eastwood Avenue, 2510 Ashland Avenue, 1615 Lincoln Street in the R1 Single Family Residential District. The zoning board of appeals found the proposal does not meet all of the standards for special use in this district. Specifically, the proposed parking expansion would increase the negative cumulative impact on the surrounding residential neighborhood and may interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. Following the ZBA hearing, the applicant submitted a modified traffic circulation plan and parking and operation summary that will mitigate the impact of the surround, on the surrounding residential neighborhood." That's what it reads.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I voted not to support this the last time. In my ward, we've had similar situations, and I can, I can tell you that the creation of a parking lot where there used to be residential or a side yard, something like that, basically just sucks the happiness out of, out of the adjoining property owners. It's, I think, a very sad thing. What I would support, though, and what I'm hearing the folks who are asking for reconsideration to say is that they want more time to meet and talk. I know you're not the same as Northwestern University, but one of the things that is helpful at the university is that they have a master plan. And the master plan usually lasts for about 20 years, it's, it's basically a vision, not an etched-in-stone plan, but I think that's been probably one of the problems in, in your neighborhood, is that the, when a house goes down and a parking lot goes in, that's a, it's sad, I think, for folks. And I think that's, that can be solved by communication and by careful planning. So it sounds to me like this planning has been going on for 10 years, and maybe there has been progress. It's not my ward, so I don't, I haven't been following it closely, but having had similar experiences, I can tell you that it's worth the effort, and if we can protect the property values of the surrounding neighbors, I think that's very important, because otherwise it just creates a real sort of confrontational, I don't know, neighbor interaction that's not helpful. And I think you could do a much better job by continuing the conversations, something that Alderman Revelle is very good at. But right now, I don't feel comfortable in supporting this unless what we're doing in reconsideration is really allowing that conversation to go on.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rainey?
Well, first of all, the motion has to do with reconsideration, not on why we want to reconsider it. However, the reconsideration provision of the rules of the council mentions that, well, the word "may" is in there, reconsideration of certain ordinances and resolutions may take place on the evening where the ordinance was introduced or action was taken. And one of the interesting things about this ordinance is that it is included in the same night where reconsideration may take place. And the reason, as I've discussed with Alderman Revelle, is because it is a zoning issue. And zoning issues, the ordinance really should read, shall take place on the same night as the motion, as the ordinance is up for action or introduction, because it has to do with all sorts of issues, for example, notice to neighbors, et cetera. And the reason, and the reason you don't want it to take place in two weeks at the next meeting is because you don't want to have to renotice people. Alderman Revelle said to me, and we had this, so that we could get this clarified, is that there just wants to be a conversation. Well, this is a very important ordinance, and we don't just have casual conversations about things that have been defeated. I mean, this ordinance was defeated, and I don't have any particularly strong feelings about the ordinance one way or another. I voted on the side to support the church, however, it doesn't matter because the ordinance failed, it was a tie. But I think we have an issue here of the rules, and I would like to hear our legal department argue that the motion to reconsider is legit, and if you say it is, I'm all for the motion to reconsider. But I think there needs to be a discussion on why it's okay.
Okay, a couple of things. Alderman Revelle, do you want Legal to go first, or do you want to? Okay, so Legal, Nick, and then we'll go to Alderman Revelle.
It's the position of the law department that it cannot go forward at this meeting, although the language does say "may," it would not be appropriate to go forward in the following meeting.
Can you speak up and tell us why?
Although the language says "may," as you, as you pointed out, it's our opinion that it cannot happen in the subsequent meeting. Based upon the way that the rule is written, it does involve zoning and special use, which is specifically defined in the rules, but also goes against Roberts Rules of Order, which is Rule 23. However, if the council did want to address this in this particular meeting, there are, there is an alternative that you could do.
Can you share that alternative?
You could suspend the rule.
All right. Can you just help me understand, I want to say like six months ago, I thought there was a motion to reconsider... was a motion to reconsider after the evening of the vote. So, was it the next meeting on the library parking lot?
And that was wrong. That was totally wrong, I think.
But just so I understand what the practice has been, I understand the rule is, you know, this "may," and maybe we need to clean up the rule. But has the practice been that we allow a motion to reconsider at the following meeting?
It is my understanding prior to my joining the city of Evanston that it has happened in the past.
Okay.
One time.
Thank you. All right. Alderman Revelle, then Alderman Braithwaite.
Well, I was just going to revisit our most recent history with the library parking lot. In April of last year, there was a motion to reconsider the vote. And we did—first, we did take a vote on suspending the rules, and then we voted to—which passed. And then we voted to reconsider the ordinance on the sale of the library parking lot, and that was to allow additional conversation with the adjoining property owners. And basically, the conversation at that meet—at the meeting where we moved reconsideration, the item was considered to be tabled until the conversations had taken place. So, in my view, this request tonight to reconsider the motion on the expanded parking lot for St. Ace is very similar to what we did just April a year ago.
All right. Alderman Braithwaite.
The Corporation Council is a matter of procedure. Do we need a unanimous on motion to suspend, or just majority? I thought it was majority.
I believe your rules require two-thirds to suspend the rule.
Can you have two-thirds with six people?
Of those present.
Of those present.
Okay.
Could you check unanimous?
The suspension of the rules for unanimous only—is only in certain instances. It's not—this is not one of those instances.
This seems to be like more important than anything.
We'll just call it the rules.
Can you just state the rule, then, as a point of information?
Yes, state the rule.
For which one? I'm sorry.
For the motion to suspend the rules. What is the rule in this situation that you're citing?
It's Rule 3.2.
Yes. Says, "Any rule may be temporarily suspended for the matter under consideration at any time by a two-thirds vote of the Alderman present, except as provided by—in Rule 20.1," which is to suspend the rules for introduction and action.
Got it.
Okay. So, you have Alderman Braithwaite?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, then, I'd like to suspend the rules to discuss ordinance 66-0-19.
To make a—
Second.
Okay.
You want to suspend the rules to make—for reconsideration?
Well, whatever it is, we're just—
Well—
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just as a point of information for the council, if, in fact, the council suspends the rule and then votes to reconsider, the ordinance is up for action. So, the ordinance would either be enacted, or it would fail. It wouldn't be for the city council to continue to discuss. It would actually become law of—
But it would become law tonight?
Tonight.
Even though it wasn't on the agenda tonight?
If you vote—if you vote to reconsider it, it's now on the agenda, and it would then be placed for vote.
Well, you could—you—someone could make a motion to hold or table?
You could do that as well. But it's—you're reconsidering the former vote, and the former vote was to actually enact this ordinance or not. So, I just wanted to make that information clear.
Okay. Alderman Fleming.
You know, I thank you, Mr. Cummings, for knowing the rules. What I will just say for this is that we had some speakers who came out when we voted for this, who lived in the proximity, who, you know, were opposed for whatever reasons. They—I assume are not here tonight because they—oh, they knew. Okay. I was going to say, I assume they're not here because they didn't know, you know. So, I would not vote to—I mean, I made my vote last time. The facts have not changed. I understand that you all want to go back and have more conversations. I guess I would have assumed, particularly with Alderman Revelle being part of that, that was all kind of hashed out before you all got here. So, I'm not sure what would—I don't know what would change in those next conversations. But, you know, I assume the parking lot would still be there. My concerns were with the use of the high—not the highway, the alley, and so on and so forth. So, while I appreciate you all wanting to go, you know, back to the drawing board, so to speak, I guess I would have hoped all that would have been hashed out before you brought it to us the first time and was in a better place to have more council support to pass.
Alderman Revelle, then Alderman Braithwaite.
Just to respond specifically to Alderman Fleming's comments, every meeting we have results in somewhat of a conclusion, but then everybody goes home, and then we come up with another idea. So, then—we've had multiple meetings to discuss the succession of different alternatives, and the circulation in the alley is still very much an issue that I think we're working on.
Okay. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. So, Corporation Council, if I get this wrong, please correct me. So, we can do this in two steps. The goal is not to vote on the decision this evening, but to allow the Alderman time to have additional conversations with her neighbors. So, the first motion would be a motion to suspend the rules, followed by a motion to hold, which would then allow her the time that she's requesting.
Does that work? City Attorney?
You have to make the motion.
All right. So, I'm just looking for the knots. So, my first—right. So, the first—right.
Okay. So, suspension of the rules has been moved and seconded. Any conversation on that? Do you want to talk on that, though? That was—okay. Alderman Wilson?
I would support that with the expected trajectory of what you just mentioned. So, I would not personally support voting up or down. Alderman Fleming's point is extremely well-taken.
Yes.
If this is going to be voted on with some finality, it should be on an agenda, and everybody should know about it.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you. All right. Seeing no more lights, City Clerk, could you take the role on suspending the—
Rule 22.1 for reconsideration.
Yep.
Yes.
All right. If you want to take the role?
Okay.
Revelle was first.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
And Alderman Wilson. I'd like to move to table—okay.
So, just so I—I want to make sure I got that right. We have six Aldermen here. That passed on a four-to-two vote. Thank you. Okay. All right. Alderman Braithwaite.
Then I'd like to move for reconsideration of ordinance 166-0-19.
I would second that. I would like to move that we hold that item until—
Well, you have to vote on the first motion there.
Yeah, I second it.
You second.
I can move to hold that.
No.
No, do we have to—do we have to now introduce—now basically bring it back, and then go through another motion to hold, or no?
The—under Robert's rules, the super motion would be to table it without having to actually vote on the current motion.
Okay. So, then I would move to table it until the first April meeting?
You can always bring it back.
Which I'm not going to be here for, and I think maybe some other people will be. So, first, I would move to table until the second—I'm sorry, the first April meeting, regularly scheduled April meeting.
Okay. That was moved and seconded to table it. Okay. The first—do we have to do a vote on that, or no?
You need—it doesn't need to be a roll call vote, but if you need a vote to table it, yes.
Okay. All in favor of tabling it?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. We got one opposed. Alderman Fleming, it passes five to one.
If I may just ask a clarifying question to Corporation Council, just to be sure we did this right. So, there was no need for a vote on the actual motion to reconsider to bring it back?
Not since there was a motion to table. It's a superseding motion. You're asking to table a question, so it does not—
The question wasn't on the table. It wasn't on the floor.
It was moved and properly seconded to bring the question before the council, and then there was a motion that superseded it to table it to a date certain.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We got through that. So, when is that meeting? April 2nd, did we say? All right. So, April 13th, the council again will consider the parking lot at St. Ace. All right. So, thank you, everybody, for coming out on that. We're now going to move to special orders of the business. We have S.P. 1. I'm going to ask Alderman Fisk—this is your ward, right? Could you introduce that?
Sure. S.P. 1 is appealed to the City Council of the Preservation Commission decision denying the certificate of appropriateness for 2390 Orington Avenue to construct a single-family house with attached two-car garage. The City Council may make a motion to accept the application for appeal. If a motion is made and adopted, the City Council shall affirm, modify, or reverse the decision of the Preservation Commission within 45 days. If no motion to accept the application for appeal is made, the decision of the commission shall be final. I move that no motion to accept the application for appeal should be made.
Is that—all right. Then what is the motion? Tell me what's the motion. What?
Well, she made—so, she's not making a motion to accept. She's making a motion to deny the—to deny the appeal. That's what her motion was. That's fine.
My understanding was that we needed a vote on the record. Is that true? Rather than just remaining silent?
Well, you can make a motion or not make a motion, but if there's a motion that made, and it requires a second, and so if there's no second, then—
Right. But just in terms of—again, the writing here, City Attorney, is the City Council may make a motion to accept the application. Alderman Fisk made a motion to deny it.
And I think that—
Fine. Yes. Not to accept is—
And that's fine. It just still requires a second.
All right. So, that was the motion, then. Is there a second to Alderman Fisk's motion? Not to accept.
I would just like to note that in previous circumstances, we've required a revote on this one, so going along with that precedent would probably be a good thing.
All right. Okay. To deny hearing these—to deny hearing this appeal to—
Accept the application for appeal.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. Alderman Rainey? Did you—you want to comment on this, or was that—
There was a second.
There was a second. Alderman Wilson seconded it.
Oh.
Okay. Okay. All right. So, all in favor of—City Clerk, could you take the role on this one, please?
This is to deny acceptance—
This is to deny acceptance of the application for appeal.
Okay.
Okay. Alderman Revelle.
I think I want to vote aye.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay.
That is voting to deny.
To deny.
Okay. Alderman Rainey?
I want to vote no, because I want to accept the appeal.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Alderman Fleming?
What? Vote no. I don't—
If you want to hear the appeal, it's a no vote.
Okay. So, if I want to hear the appeal?
Yep.
It's a no. So, I'm a yes.
Okay. Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Okay. Alderman Wilson?
I'd call the rule, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trying to move these things along. You're right. Go ahead, Clerk Reed. Sorry, I took over your job.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wilson.
Okay. The ayes have it. This motion to appeal has been denied on a five-to-one vote. All right. We're now going to move to the consent agenda and the administration of Public Works. We didn't have quorum today for the Public Works agenda, so I am going to ask that we go back to our prior practice of actually reading the items into the record. So, Alderman, if you want to remove something after Alderman Rainey has read it, just please speak up, and we'll take things off the agenda.
Don't let me read it. If—when I come to it, if you want it off, let me know.
Okay.
Would you like me to—
If the minutes—start with the minutes, that'd be great.
—of the council? Okay. All right. Let's go here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 24, 2020, City Council meeting. Next is approval of the City of Evanston payroll and bills. I'm moving that from the consent agenda, and I will address it after the consent agenda. Second, A2, approval of the 2020 special events. They are dependent on their compliance with all requirements set forth in the special event policy and guidelines. I'll read part of this. This year's calendar includes five new events: the Pride Parade, Pride Fest, Juneteenth Parade, 3V3 Live Soccer Tournament, and Suffrage Rally. All city services are reimbursed by those hosting the events. That is for action. Next, we're being asked to approve the purchase of five vehicles and pieces of equipment for the Public Works Agency and Facilities and Fleet Management Operations. Replacement vehicles will be purchased as single-source purchases from Sourcewell and Northwest Municipal Conference SPC Joint Purchasing Cooperative Contracts. A 2020 International HV607 with aerial body from Versalift in the amount of $208,525. One 2020 Ford F-450 with dump body and snowplow from Curry Commercial Center in the amount of $91,709. One Ford F-250 pickup with liftgate and snowplow from Curry Commercial in the amount of $50,901. Vector 2100I from Standard Equipment Company in the amount of $418,330.57. Also, staff is recommending a sole-source purchase of one Nifty SP64 Hybrid Diesel Electric Lift from Lift Works in the amount of $99,700 for the purchase of Victor 2100I and Crane Carrier in the amount of $418,330.57. That will come from the sewer fund. Let's see. All remaining vehicles totaling $450,835 will be from the equipment replacement. An additional $25,000 will be funded from the Crown Fund to be put forward—to be put towards a lift that will be utilized by the Robert Crown Center. That is for action. City Council is being asked to authorize the manager to execute a contract with Davis Bancorp for armored car services for a contract for three years with two additional one-year options to renew. There's a breakdown per year inclusive of nine center office pickups and one garage pickup for all on-street coins is as follows: $68,960 a year for years one through three, $71,040 for year four, $73,884 for year five. Let's see. Okay. That is for action. City Council is being asked to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Elevate Energy—
Can you pull that one, please?
Yes, ma'am. A5 is off the consent agenda. I'll address that later. Okay. The council is being asked to authorize the manager to execute a contract with Patrick Engineering in the amount of $475,530 to provide engineering design for the Main Street Improvement Project between Maple and Hinman Avenues. This is general obligation bond funding in the amount of $20,000, and from the Chicago Main Tiff Fund in the amount of $455,530. This is for action tonight. The council is being asked also to authorize the manager to execute an agreement for material testing services for various capital infrastructure improvement projects with Terra Inc. in the amount of $150,000. This agreement is for a term of one year with two additional one-year options to renew. Funding will be provided from the budgets for the individual capital projects and will not exceed $150,000 for the initial 12-month contract term. This is for action. We're being asked to authorize the manager to execute a five-year agreement with valuation for the Evanston Waterworks properties with Burns &amp; McDonald in the amount of $163,810 from the water fund. Let's see. That's for action. We're asked to authorize the manager also to execute an agreement with— We're asked to authorize the manager also to execute an agreement with Great Lakes Plumbing and Heating for HVAC equipment replacement at the Police and Fire Headquarters, Fire Station Number Three, and the Levy Senior Center in the amount of $692,500. Funding will be from the Capital Improvements Fund, 2019 GEO Bonds in the amount of $692,500. This is a request from the Great Merchants Grant totaling $64,632 for the following business districts and affinity groups: Central Street Business District, $5,312; Howard Street Business Association, $10,000; West Village Business Association, $5,811; West End Business Association, $8,350; Hill Arts Business District, $7,812.76; Central Evanston Business Association, $10,000; Maple Foster, $9,590.32; Noyce, $5,256; and Black Business Consortium; Evanston North Shore, $2,500. Economic Development Staff also recommends approval to execute a contract with Herrera Landscape Snow Removal in the amount of $57,069 to deliver landscaping services to the business districts. And this is for action tonight. Next item is Resolution 23R20 authorizing the manager to enter into contracts to design and reconstruct the Fleetwood Jordan Jim floor without using a public bidding process so that it'll be ready for September 2020. The design contract shall not exceed $35,000, and the construction contract shall not exceed $260,000. Funding will be from the Capital Improvements Fund, GEO Bonds. This is due to water seeping under the floor. There's an excellent description in the packet. City Council is being asked to adopt Resolution 24R20 authorizing the manager to execute, I'm going to take this off. Is Kumar still here? I don't know. You are. Okay. All right. I'm going to take this off, Kumar, so you can explain this. This has to do with our Dinerji Energy Services and going forward with that service. Okay. Next is adopt, this is for introduction. We're being asked to introduce 20020, which amends Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 1, Stopping Standing or Parking Prohibited in Specific Places, having to do with intruding on a bicycle lane. A few, $75 was initially recommended due to high safety concerns. That is now back to $55, which is the current cost for obstructing traffic. That's for introduction. Ordinance 26020 is for introduction, amends Title 7, Chapter 3, Sidewalk, Sidewalk Construction. The city code to require public sidewalks be installed where none exists or to require the replacement of substandard walk squares where sidewalks exist wherever new construction is erected. Let's see. For introduction is Ordinance 27020.
Take that off the agenda, please.
Yes, ma'am. This is off the agenda. Has to do with residential parking, da-da-da-da. Ordinance 36020 is...
Do you take that off, please?
That is off. That has to do with the rip rap. Okay. This is special service area. This is city managers requesting introduction and action, so I am going to move introduction and action and suspension of the rules on Ordinance 37020, repealing and replacing Ordinance 162019, levying taxes for special service district, SSA Number 7. This is a housekeeping matter, more or less. This is in order to correct a mathematical error in Ordinance 162019 to be resubmitted to Cook County. I move introduction, action, suspension of rules. Ordinance 21020 is for action tonight and has to do with allowing the construction of local improvement known as Evanston Special Assessment, 1525, the alley north of Central Street and east of Ridge Avenue through the special assessment process. Funding is from Capital Improvement Program in the amount of $250,000. That is for action. Ordinance 24020, staff is requesting that this be tabled until June 8. I therefore move that we table Ordinance 24020 until June 8. Let's see. And that concludes the, the...
Excellent. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. With Alderman Sufferin being absent tonight, Alderman Revelle, could you do the, move the items on planning and development?
I move item P1, Ordinance 33-0-20, extending the time, extending the time for the applicant to obtain a building permit for 910.
Mayor, can I just have a point of order for one moment?
Okay. Yep.
Alderman Rainey had a motion to table the very last item on the agenda, on A19, and because of the nature of the motion, it needs to be addressed before you can move on with the rest of the consent agenda.
As well as the... I'm sorry. Then why aren't we just taking it off and then making that motion?
All right.
Right. Because I like to go through this whole agenda, take all the items off, and then we can take care of all the business. So A19 is off.
As well as the item to suspend rules?
I think the suspend rules, I, I don't know. I didn't see a problem when we had motions to accept, you know, suspending of the rules for introduction and action, voted on that first and then voted on the consent agenda. That seemed efficient.
That's, that is probably the most efficient way to do it.
All right. Thank you. All right. That's, that's what we're going to do on that. All right. So A19, though, for the record, is off. We'll talk about that, and, and then Alderman Revelle, if you can take us to planning and development.
So item P1 is Ordinance 33-0-20, extending the time for the applicant to obtain a building permit for 910, 938 Custer Avenue. This would extend the time for the commencement of construction for the plan development at that address. Was originally approved April 8, 2019. The ordinance would grant an extension of one year for a building permit to be issued in construction to begin. No other changes to the existing plan development are proposed. This is for introduction.
And for, since we had that committee, do we need to read all those, or can we just take the ones off?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point, because that...
Spare you some reading.
Because, thank you. Because we did have that committee meeting, we could just look at planning and development and ask Alderman to take a minute and let us know if he'd like to remove anything from...
Well, item P3 was tabled in committee.
All right. P3 is in committee.
And item P2 had a two, two-to-two vote, so I don't know if that...
So it failed in committee?
It, no, it came with no recommendation, I think.
It came to City Council with no recommendation.
All right. So does someone want to pull P2 off? Or keep it on? Okay, we're keeping it on so far. Alderman suffered, or excuse me, Wilson said P3 was tabled in committee, so that won't be before us.
Can we take P4 off?
All right. P4 is off. Okay. Alderman Revelle, do you want to introduce the economic development item?
This is Ordinance...
Actually, if you just take it off.
You want that off? Okay. All right. ED1 is off.
And take HS1 off also.
And HS1 is off. Okay. All right. Anything else that people want off? All right. So there was a motion on all those items. Is there a second? Okay. Okay. Does someone want to move a motion to, on, on the holding? I mean, not the holding, on the suspension of the rules? All right, go ahead, Alderman Rainey.
S to A17?
Correct.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Rules were suspended on a six-to-zero vote. All right. We had a motion that was seconded on the consent agenda. City, City Clerk Reed, could you take the role, please?
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Berthwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
All right. The consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on a six-to-zero vote. We're now going to move to the items that were removed from the agenda. First item up was...
Administration of Public Works. I took the...
Yeah. So the minute, the minutes, I'm sorry, the minutes?
I moved the minutes.
Okay. They were, they moved. Okay. A1.
So, let me, I'm scrolling up here. A1, let me get this. Approval of the City Evanston Payroll and Bills. I move, I move approval, and then I'd like to speak to them.
Is there a second? All right. Help him for conversation, Alderman Rainey.
Yes. On several occasions, there has been concern from people speaking at Citizen Comment regarding some of our legal bills, specifically in emails to us over the week and tonight at the podium regarding an Ansel Glink bill for $13,231.94. Specifically, I want to explain that that bill is for representation having to do with the fact that, number one, it is an outside attorney. And the reason it's an outside attorney is we've been criticized over time by having our own staff represent us and by the very people that are suing us, our, our staff attorneys are biased, and so we have hired outside attorneys. Secondly, a former governor of the state of Illinois is suing us and has a team of two additional lawyers, and so it seems very responsible on the part of the City of Evanston to hire lawyers who are competent in the field of municipal and election law so that we are not railroaded, and so that's what we have done. And if we weren't sued, we wouldn't have hired lawyers. And so not only were we sued, but now the people who have sued us have once again sued us, and we're going to appellate court. So that's why this, this charge is $13,000, which is not that expensive given all of the lawsuits and, and arguments that are placed against us. So, having said that, I, I move approval.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. So this item was moved and seconded. City Clerk, could you take the role on A1, the bills list?
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Berthwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
All right. The bills list passes the Evanston City Council's six-to-zero vote. Alderman Rainey, could you take us to A5?
A5. Contract award with Elevate Energy for the municipal zero emissions strategy. This is, purpose of this is to develop a comprehensive zero emissions municipal operation strategy, and the cost is $64,912.50. I move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Alderman Fleming?
My question isn't necessarily about the service, but when I'm looking at the MWEBE memo, it says that they are ineligible because they are, I'm a nonprofit, but it says to see their attached written explanation of how they plan to, I don't say meet, but what their commitment is, and then there's just no memo. Unless I just can't read.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Clerk Reed, Manager Storley. So there, there is a letter that I'd be glad to provide that the applicant or the, the consultant did submit with their application explaining the reasons, sort of through the state, the state certification process, for why and how nonprofits are ineligible for certification. And then additionally, they went on to explain the way in which their, the leadership of their organization is made up exclusively, so thinking about the board and the CEO of women and people of color.
Okay. So, yeah, I would love to have that memo.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk, could you please take the role on A5?
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Berthwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen. I'm sorry, Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
All right. That, A5, the contract with Elevate Energy for municipal zero emissions strategy, RFP, passes six-to-zero. Alderman Rainey, could you take us to A1?
Next is Resolution 24, 24R20, authorizing the manager to execute a six-month extension to the city's electric service agreement with Dinerji Energy Services, and we have some really good news here.
Great. Is there a second?
I move approval.
All right. Welcome back again, Kumar.
Thanks. So this is a three-year contract that we signed in 2016 for electric supply service for roughly 23 city facilities, and this is ongoing. We've, we've had an alternative supply agreement with an alternative supplier for electricity for a fixed number of facilities for eight, eight or nine years since the state has deregulated its electric industry. And so one of the things that we are, we saw in the fall and we're seeing right now is that the alternative supply rates are very low. And so right now, the, the proposal, the six-month extension proposal that we see, the rate in there is 4.437 cents per kilowatt hour, and so that's almost a cent and a half cheaper than what we're paying right now, and both of those are two and three cents cheaper than what folks are paying comm. ed. And so one of the really nice things about this short-term extension is that it's also going to immediately, or once effective, will bring the new Robert Crown Center into that existing rate, and so they will see, we'll see about a two cent per kilowatt hour drop in their electric supply price, which is excellent. And then on the extension, the primary reasons we're doing that are to add additional accounts that were not serviced by our alternative supply, so they will see a reduction in their rate, but they will also now be serviced with 100% renewable energy, as are some of our, the existing accounts. And then lastly, it buys us a little bit of time to be able to go out and issue an RFP at the end of the summer when prices historically have been at their lowest point. And so our current contract expires at the end of the summer, meaning we wouldn't be able to take advantage of that, that lower price window, so that's the, the reason for this extension.
That is great news. Thank you. Thank you, Kumar. All right. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of Resolution 24-R-20?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's money.
All right. Resolution passes.
It's a contract, yeah. You think we need to vote, take the role on that?
I thought it was a resolution, so I thought we didn't have to...
I know, but it's money in a contract.
What do you think, City Attorney?
I believe you need to call the role.
All right. We're going to call a role on A12, Resolution 24-R20. Clerk Reed.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Berthwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
All right. That resolution passes six-to-zero. Next item, A16? Or 15? 15? Yeah, residential parking.
Residential parking. Did we take that? Oh, okay, we did. Ordinance 27020, amending Title 10, Chapter 11, Section 10, limited parking, and Title 10, Chapter 11, Section 18, residents-only parking. I move for introduction.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Alderman Revelle?
I ask to have this taken off the agenda because I need to make an amendment. This deals with two residential parking districts west of Green Bay Road. The problem is the residents on the south side of Central Street are in District H, and the adjacent residential streets are in District 6, but by merging the two districts, then the folks who park, who live on Central Street when we have a snow day and remove the parking from Central Street, or when there's a football game day and they can't park on Central, they can park around the corner in one of the adjacent residential blocks. But in making this proposed amendment, one block of Chancellor that was added to the H District a good many years ago, but was never recorded in the city code, was then omitted when the ordinance was drafted. So on page 652 of your council packet, in the chart at the top of the page, it currently reads Chancellor Street, North Side from Asbury Avenue to Bryant Avenue, and I move to amend that to say Chancellor Street, North Side from Dead End West to Bryant Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Seeing no discussion, all in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Amendment passes six-to-zero. All right. Seeing no discussion on the ordinance for introduction, City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
All right, ordinance 27-0-20 passes the Evanston, that's item A 15, passes the Evanston City Council on a six to zero vote. Could you take us to A 16, Alderman Rainey?
A 16. Was this taken off?
It was.
A 16. Staff recommends that we introduce Ordinance 36020, amending the Code 7103, General Regulations and 71112, areas prohibited for bathing purposes by preventing access to the rock revetment along lakefront. Funding for replacing signage along the lakefront will come from the general fund. I move introduction.
Is there a second? All right, Alderman Fleming?
Yep, so I took this off. I have a couple of questions, Dave Alar, whoever's in charge. I'm all about doing this. I guess my concern is I don't know how much faith I put in signage, because, and I say that because I have teenagers who frequent the rocks, and they're like seals down there in the summertime, and I don't know that they are going to just be mindful of a sign. I don't really know what else we can do. I know you talked about putting up the snow fencing in areas where we have small children, but I guess I would suggest that if we have areas where the rocks are more dangerous than usual, I'll just say that we are a little more aggressive about putting fencing or something there. And I also would love for us to make sure that we are speaking to Northwestern about their rocks areas as well. I don't know what the damage is, and I know they have their own engineer, I would assume, but I'm just really concerned if we, if they are, you know, we really want people to be cautious, we're going to have to do a little more than signs to get teenagers to not, not only sit down there, but then they jump off the rocks and do a lot of things that I know aren't necessarily allowed, what teenagers do.
Okay.
So that's just a note of caution of someone who has teenagers who sit on the rocks, who will look at the signs and still sit on the rocks.
Understood. We'll do the best that we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stonebeck, Alderman Wilson?
And I can't remember if it was specifically mentioned, but if some of the signage could also be in Spanish as well, that would be appreciated.
All right. All right, seeing no more discussion. City Clerk, could you please take the role on A 16, Ordinance 36-0-20?
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Alderman Wilson.
All right, A 16 passes on a six to zero vote. Alderman Rainey, could you take us to A 19?
Did you want me to do something with 17, or did we take care of that with spending?
No, we didn't.
I moved all three items.
I thought we, I'm sorry.
Motion to suspend the rules, it passed.
Yeah, I thought we took care of it.
Consent agenda.
We did all three things.
No, we did.
That's cool. Okay. All right. Let's see. So the next thing, and what about the tabling? When I tabled the ordinance, is that okay?
Yeah, that one we had to take off, so that one you're going to introduce, and then we're going to have to table here.
That one was?
A 19.
A 19. Okay. Okay, A 19, our staff is recommending tabling this, so I am going to move to table Ordinance 24020, amending Section 7293 sidewalks to be cleared of ice, snow, dirt, and weeds until the June 8, 2020 Administration Public Works Committee meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Excuse me, this is an ordinance?
It's a table.
But it was a move to table, so. Wait, do I have to have a vote on that, or?
You don't have, you can have the vote on the tabling, but it's being tabled to Administration Public Works, so it's really being sent back to committee.
Right.
It's really, yeah.
Okay. So, can I just do a roll call then? Or do I have to do?
It doesn't have to be a voice vote. It could be a voice vote.
All right, all in favor, send it back to committee.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, sent back to committee, a six to zero vote. All right.
That's it.
Well, thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Revelle, can you take us to P 4?
Okay, this is Ordinance 25-0-20, amending Title 7, Chapter 8, Section 8, tree preservation. Shall I read the whole thing?
That's not necessary. Is there a second for that?
So basically, the staff is recommending that it be tabled until the June 8 meeting.
All right, but.
Second.
Second, okay. We got some lights on. Alderman?
Yeah, and seconded.
Yeah, I think it was a little confusing, because she was reading the motion in.
I was confused.
You know, and then, and then, so, the motion was read, the motion was read in, it was seconded.
To table it.
Now there's a motion to table it.
Well, I was really tabling the motion, seconding the motion to table.
Okay. All right, so you were seconding to table, but let's just make sure we got the motion in to begin, in to begin with. So, Alderman Revelle, okay, read in, Ordinance 25-0-20 for action. Okay, was that second? Can somebody second that?
Alderman Fisk.
Okay, all right. And then, there was a table, there was a motion to table this, that was seconded. To June 8. Okay. And that was seconded.
So now you can just do a voice vote on the motion to table.
All in favor of the motion to table?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this item is tabled to June 8. Okay, next item is ED 1. Let's see, Alderman Revelle, could you move that item?
Yes, this is Ordinance 28-0-20, amending portions of city code sections to remove the requirement for business licenses and implement a business registration program. Economic Development Committee and staff recommend adoption of Ordinance 28-0-20, amending portions of the city code to remove requirement for business licenses and implement a business registration program. These changes will replace business licenses with a business registration program for all for-profit entities operating, including state licensed businesses. Home-based businesses will also be required to register, but will not be charged an annual registration fee, and this is for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Open for discussion, Alderman Wilson?
I think I am clear on this, I just wanted to double check. So, the home-based businesses is at a no cost at this point, so the, I think the only penalty was a late fee, so a late fee for a zero would be zero. So, I just want to ensure that we're not going to be enforcing noncompliance on the home-based businesses, because that was kind of the intent. So, is that everybody's understanding? Okay, so otherwise, I'm okay with this cleanup work.
All right, Alderman Fleming?
Obviously, I'm not in the committee, but my question is, how are we going to, I assume we're going to be mailing these to people, but what is the explanation that we're giving, particularly for home-based businesses? Because I imagine some are going to be concerned about then being on some list that later on we are using to generate fees, or do some kind of regulation.
We don't have any staff present to answer that question this evening, but we could get that information to you.
Yeah, I mean, I just would love to see like the letter or whatever we're sending out, so people are clear, one, about the fee structure, and then the late fees, but then also, how are we using, what's the benefit of registering?
Sure.
All right, seeing no more discussion. City Clerk, could you take the role on ED 1, Ordinance 28-0-20?
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Alderman Fisk.
I'm sorry, Alderman Fleming.
Alderman Fisk.
Alderman Brithwaite. Alderman Wilson.
All right, Ordinance 28-0-20, amending the portion of the city code to remove the requirements for business licenses and implement a business registration program, passes six to zero. Alderman Brithwaite, could you move HS 1?
Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, I'd like to move for introduction and action, Ordinance 32-0-20, amending the city code Title 3 to restrict the sale of adoptions of cats, dogs, and rabbits.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I initially requested suspension of the rules for introduction and action at tonight's meeting, but I am going to amend that for just introduction and action as a subsequent meeting that will give us some time to develop the wording for the concerns that we heard tonight about individual breeders.
Is there a second for that? All right. So, we've got that amendment with a second, so.
Well, it's not an amendment, she's just withdrawing the request.
Oh, just withdraw?
Withdrawing the action, so it'll be just for introduction.
All right, so that we don't need to do anything on that? Okay. All right, Alderman Wilson, then Alderman Revelle?
Alderman Fisk, I appreciate that. I think there is a little bit of work to do on this, to address some of those concerns, so, yeah, we can hopefully get that done before the next meeting.
All right, thank you, Alderman Fleming. Sorry, I said Alderman Revelle, not Fleming.
That's okay. So, I had a question last time that I don't see addressed in the memo or the ordinance, which had to do with the USDA licensing, which the gentleman also brought up tonight, so just hope that that's on the list of something we are going to make sure is taken care of in the new ordinance. Also, I think as I, you know, continue to read through this and hear from people about this, I'm all about, you know, the bunnies are, I'm fine with save the bunnies, I'm fine with neutering and spating cats and dogs as well, but I do have some kind of concerns about, and I imagine you're going to address this, but how this is going to fall on the person who has a dog at home, who has puppies, who they want to sell the puppies to neighbors down the street.
Right, and actually, I think that's addressed in this or in the current ordinance, but we'll make that clearer in the.
Okay, and then I think making it clear when it comes back, so that people who come to speak.
Sure.
Are clear on what it does and what it doesn't do.
Right.
All right, seeing no more discussions, this item, HS 1, Ordinance 32-0-20, amending the city code Title 3 to restrict the sale and adoption of cats, dogs, and rabbits, has been moved just for introduction this evening, not for introduction and action. City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
All right, this ordinance passes for introduction this evening, and city staff will work on the feedback they've received before it's brought forward again. All right, we're now moving to call the wards. Alderman Revelle?
I wasn't planning to say anything, but I guess, having heard so many speakers this evening from Smith Park, expressing really serious concerns about the issues with Tape Coat Plant in their immediate neighborhood, I would request information from city staff about how we're working to protect those neighbors.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rainey?
And I would hope that that's disseminated among all of us.
Absolutely.
No other comments.
Do you have any announcements, Alderman Rainey?
Pardon me?
Do you have any announcements?
No.
Okay, Alderman Fleming?
Sorry, just want to announce that we'll have a ninth ward meeting next Wednesday, the 18th, over at the Levy Center, and then ward newsletter will be out tomorrow.
Terrific, thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to send out a huge thank you to all of the neighbors and the Evanston firefighters who showed up for a significant house fire on Sherman Avenue last night. Fortunately, everyone is fine, people and animals, so that's a good thing, but the house was significantly affected by smoke and fire. Very proud, as we all are, of all our neighborhoods and how neighbors turn out to help in these, in these circumstances. So, yay Evanston. Thank you.
You're here. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Brithwaite?
Just out to all the second ward residents, that this Thursday, 7:00 PM, we'll have our monthly second ward meeting. More information to come from my newsletter. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you, a couple of things. So, Alderman Fisk, yes, definitely with regard to the fire department, there was another fire over the weekend in the High Rise and Chicago Avenue. So, let's hear it for the building code and the sprinkler code that certainly protected life and property to a great extent, not to mention the great work by the fire department and first responders, other first responders who were there. Let's see, I would like to make a reference to the Rules Committee to get some language to clean up the motions to reconsider provisions, just so we have some crystal clarity on those, so we don't have confusion that everybody has to listen to at our meetings. And with that, I would like to make a motion to convene into executive session. So, pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, litigation, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session. There are numerous exceptions under the Open Meetings Act, the exceptions are five ILCS 120, 2A, C 1, C 11, and C 21.
Okay. All right, so that was, okay, moved and seconded. The city manager does want to talk about one item. Can I have her talk about that item right now, or do I got to take the vote? You want me to take the vote on recessing, but she wants to talk about this.
Okay, I'll hold my motion till we hear from the city manager about that.
All right, so that motion, a second is held right now. City Manager, you got the floor?
Thank you. I just wanted to have a brief conversation about Harley Clark. I know there was a discussion last week at Rules Committee, and I wanted to talk about calendaring when we would bring that back, because it was contemplated for March 23rd. There's absolutely no way city staff could prepare that for that date. I know that there's been talk about proposals being presented, and it sounds like there's a desire for that to be happening, so I would like to get in touch with the proposers to talk about dates that might work for everybody to come and do that. So I have April 20th, which is a third Monday, I also have May 18th, which is another third Monday. Those are both open dates available for this to potentially be the sole topic of the agenda. So if there's a general consensus on either one of those two dates.
What was the second date? April 20th?
April 20th and May 18th. They're both the third Mondays. I'm not sure if people have a feeling that we could get this all in one meeting, or if we want to have two meetings with.
How about May 18th? And then, I think the suggestion to have presentations at a public forum seems like a fine idea, and I think, you know, maybe not even, you know, all four in one night. I don't know how much time people would want to spend, you know, maybe they would, you know, you know, something, so, in other words, May 18th to give us enough time to allow for those presentations if the applicants want to do that.
Yeah, I think we would potentially have that meeting be the public proposal meeting, where we would allocate probably 15 minutes for each proposal to propose it with a presentation,